Next item, please.
Next item, Union Leadership Commentary. This new section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district administration and all bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decision-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with leadership team of all unions as well as a group meeting with union presidents. These meetings are not required but are an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This new section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestions, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. The first is the Association of Dearborn Schools Administration, ADSA, and there is none. The next is Dearborn Federation of School Employees, D F S E, and there are none. The next is Dearborn Federation of Teachers, D F T, Ms. Kathy Martin. Sorry, before you begin, you wanted to come and speak about the recent survey results.
I did. Good evening. I don't know how to work this, so someone might have to help me.
Jacob or Bob?
So, we have been trying to survey members about everything, contract negotiations, what's going well, what's not going well. And really, in order to improve ourselves as a union and in order to improve the district, we recently sent out a survey that asked members to respond about how satisfied they were with how the union was functioning. They were able to tell us how they felt their building reps supported them, how they felt the executive board supported them, how they felt about the contract. And we also asked them how they felt about the district within which they work. And this survey, they knew that it was going to be, the results were going to be shared, but they knew that it was going to be completely anonymous. So, these are the results. Okay, awesome, thank you. All right, so we had a total of 548 responses. I will say the survey was not anonymous, so that may have decreased the number of respondents. So, for experience, we have about half of the teachers, it's funny, it's split. So, these are the years that they have in Dearborn Public Schools. About 26% were one to three years, but 23% were, no, no, sorry, flipped that. 23% were one to three years and 21, and 28% had 21 years or more. And the rest, the 50%, falls somewhere between there. The rest, the bottom part, is how many people have been in education. So, 34% of the respondents have been teaching for 21-plus years, and the rest falls in the pie chart. So, a lot of these people have been here a long time, or at least have been teaching for a long time. So, we asked them how they felt specifically about their building, how they felt about the school board, and then how they felt about central office.
Are you guys seeing the results on that TV?
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say.
They're, I think they're.
Okay, sorry, a lot of us are looking at each other. Sorry, didn't want to interrupt, but like.
Thank you. No, well, like, this is the important part. The other stuff was just, so we had an idea of who was responding. So, should I wait until it's on the screen?
Please, yes, wait.
Okay.
One quick question while we're waiting. Remind us about how many people are in the union, because you said you had 548 responses.
1370-something.
Okay, so a pretty good response rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, did you say that this is anonymous, or this is not anonymous?
This was not anonymous. Well, not anonymous to the elected board, but anonymous to everybody else.
Okay, that's what, thank you.
So, what we did with the survey was we took out any identifying information and just kind of gleaned the topics that seemed to be recurring.
President Perry?
Yes.
When they're finished with that and able to get it set up, I need some help too. They got it, they have it working up here.
It's ready.
Okay, all right. So, you don't need that.
Okay, Ms. Martin, you can get, sorry about the delay. And to my good friend, she sent me a text message, "No, this was not intentional. We love Kathy and we love our teachers."
I didn't send any texts.
No, it wasn't either. But you can continue, please.
Okay. So, first, we were asking about how people felt within their buildings, because a lot of times surveys come out, and it's like, "How do you feel about administration?" As a special ed person, I have like eight administrators over me. Which administrator am I responding to? So, this is just about building-specific administrators. So, people who feel supported, respected, and heard by the building-level administrators. We had 64.4% who felt respected and heard in their buildings. We're gonna have to target the other 35%, but it looks pretty good. Then we took it up to, "How do you feel by the school board? Do you feel supported, respected, and heard by the school board?" And this one wasn't looking so pretty. 17% said that they felt heard, respected, and supported by the school board. And I have to tell you, a lot of people have been telling me lately, like, "We emailed the school board and not a single response. We emailed the school board." So, members are not hearing from you all, and that's really frustrating them. And I will say that boundary line exemption really is a big issue for members, because they have built their lives around being able to work and send their children to school. So, taking that boundary line exemption away has hurt a lot of people. There are members now who are looking at sending their children to private school. That's going to negatively impact us when you think about losing students and how many students we'd lose every year. These members are going to be sending their dollars over to private school instead of us being able to get the per pupil funding. So, this boundary line exemption thing is actually, has, is not helping the district. It's hurting our members, and in the end, it's going to hurt the district as well. So, this is something I really want you all to think about, and those results kind of indicate what's going on. The next one is, "I feel supported, respected, and heard by my district administrators." This is like central office-level employees. And we have 19.3% who feel that way. That's almost 80% of people, of members in this district, over, you know, 1,300 people who don't feel respected and heard by central office. We've been having conversations, but things don't seem to be trickling down. This is the feedback. The most people are saying they feel that their voices are not heard. That's what most of these members are here today to talk about, how they feel unheard in the district. Concerns seem to fall on deaf ears, and it seems as if when we voice something, it gets ignored long enough where the steam kind of runs out and we move on to the next issue. Things are not actually being resolved. Teachers feel that there's issues with special education. People need to be trained. We understand that there's a lack of staff, there's a lack of parapros, but we can do more with what we have. And the most frequent comments were that the teachers are usually the last to know, they don't get any respect, they remain unheard, teachers sometimes are the scapegoats, and teachers are blamed for some leadership failures. I really, so I saw one of the buildings in this district for teacher appreciation did something really awesome, like, a limo bus showed up to the school, put the staff on the limo bus, drove them to get food, really, really amazing grand gestures. But let me tell you, these grand gestures would not be necessary if people came to work and felt respected and appreciated every day. Don't feed me lunch once a year. Lunch once a year is not gonna make up for every single day showing up and not feeling downtrodden. Working in Dearborn, teachers love the district, they love the community, but they feel disrespected, disheartened. Central office feels too top-heavy. And when people voice concerns, when people say that they're feeling not heard, they are feeling burnt out, they're labeled as toxic, these are all things that our members are feeling. Another thing is that the boundary line exemption is unfair to families. Some members are not happy with early release. That one has mixed reviews, to be honest with you. Time and expertise. Members who feel that their time is well-respected in Dearborn, we've got 34.9%, they feel that their time is well-respected. Again, we've got 65% of people who don't feel that their time is respected. We tried to get some of that back with this recent contract, but there's, other things have fallen into play. And people who feel that their expertise is well-respected in Dearborn, that's 40%. We've got, as the first slide showed, we've got some really seasoned teachers. And to only have 40% feel that their expertise is well-respected, that's kind of a problem. This is difficult to read, this is, these are, this kind of addresses that. So, what members really, really like is the pay and the health insurance, and they really like how much they pay for health insurance, the coverage, all of that. But what really keeps people here are their colleagues, their community, location. Something I hear all the time, people who resign, people who leave upset, always say, "But I love my colleagues, I love the kids." So, let me tell you, within these buildings, we have little havens. People love their colleagues, they love their students, they love the families. But for a small number, some of these buildings can be toxic and can feel unsupportive. We don't have 100%. Now, the problem is, teachers feel that the curriculum is not what it needs to be. It frequently changes, they feel that they don't have enough support, and they feel that some topics, like science, doesn't really have anything for them to go on. And when we bring a curriculum into the district, it's not treated with fidelity. Actually, we're in a task force today, and we like to Dearborn-ize everything. Instead of do things the way that they're supposed to do, be done, so that we have an accurate assessment as to their effectiveness. How many people are actually looking for a job outside of Dearborn? So, right now, 56.4% are not looking for a job outside of Dearborn. But that's kind, to think about it, we've got about 40% of people that may be looking elsewhere. That's a lot considering we already have a shortage. What made you decide to stay? Again, they like the pay, the longevity, they like to stay because they are, some people are locked at the top of the pay scale, and they know if they go elsewhere, they're not going to make that kind of money. The reason they're leaving is because they feel unsupported, disrespect from central office. Some people looked at the boundary line exemption as a reason, an excuse to leave Dearborn, like, "Okay, well, I'm not tied to this district anymore, because it's going to be inconvenient to send my child to school." And some people felt like there was a lack of a work-life balance with all the demands that they, that they're faced with. Health and safety, how do you feel, how safe do you feel this environment is? And we told them to define it any way they want. So, we've got 41.2% who feel that this is a safe environment. And the things that they cited the most were, not the most, but buildings deteriorating, not clean buildings. We know that there's a shortage of custodial staff, and this is really impacting teachers. There are some buildings, it's being dealt with, but the bathrooms don't get cleaned. The classrooms don't get swept. And, I mean, we're coming off the wheels of COVID, and so, like, what happened to all the cleanliness? The other thing is student behavior. There's details, how many people responded, so you can understand, but just today, members were asking me about how to handle violent behaviors that, I mean, they're being addressed, but they're not being solved. So, we have problems that people are acknowledging, yes, it's an issue, this should not be happening, but there's no solution, there's no resolution. This is very difficult to deal with, and it's hard for teachers to come to work every day, knowing that this might be the day where they get punched in the face, or this might be the day where, you know, they get spit on, or whatever. So, this is an issue that we need to resolve, not just for the safety of staff, but for the safety of other students as well.
We don't have another slide.
Oh, am I done? Oh, okay. Oh, I thought I had one more. Okay. And so, this is how members actually feel in real time. This survey closed in April. So, and it took us some time to get it together, and we're here now.
Are there any questions for President Martin?
Do we have a survey that we can compare this to, or is this the first time that this has ever been done?
This is the first one of this type.
Okay, so, so we have nothing from, say, last year that we can say that we've seen?
We did, I can't remember what last year's survey was like. This one is definitely better laid out.
Okay.
Trustee Petrikov?
So, these questions, I didn't really see specific questions. Were there specific questions given for them to answer?
No, they were that broad.
This was an open-ended, so everybody couldn't interpret their responses according to their own personal feelings. It wasn't a, it wasn't specific, basically.
I mean, it was specific to different areas, like, health and safety was specific to health and safety, but they could interpret that however they wanted.
A question, you said you also had them answer questions about the union representation. I didn't see any of that information.
We did not include it, but I will tell you, overall, union satisfaction was over 75%.
Okay.
So.
And you just, the boundary line exemption, we just started, you said this closed in April. Were they, how was that incorporated into these questions when it sounds like they may not have been aware that this was going to happen? I don't know when you began the survey.
It wasn't incorporated into the questions, so every question had an open-answer area where people could type in, that's how we got some of the specifics.
So, was that kind of a last-minute add-in then?
No, no, no.
Because they wouldn't have known about the bound, about, until they went, a lot of people weren't aware.
The boundary line exemption came out in March, I wanna say.
Right.
So, when we sent out the survey, closed in April. So, we didn't ask any questions about boundary line exemptions. We basically let.
But people didn't, trustee Moser, people weren't aware until they went to apply for it, and that didn't begin until after, which is why.
Something came out.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just trying to get the timeline of when.
So, the policy was passed in January, there was an email from Student Services, sent out to our teachers, and that's what triggered what you're saying. So, trustee Petrikov's questioning the timing.
I just wanna understand the time.
Yeah, the timing was, the survey was open, and they had places where it says, "Tell us more about this," or, "Tell us why you're feeling upset," or, "Tell us why you're not happy with this." And that's when they were on, they were able to write whatever they wanted.
Whatever they wanted, okay. That's all I wanted to understand.
So, within the survey, could we find out how many are elementary school versus middle school versus high school, or we don't have that, or you don't?
I'm pretty certain we do have that data. I didn't write the survey myself, but I think we have, because this was just geared just for this presentation.
Correct, okay. So, we could do a deeper dive as to perhaps extracting, I know, data, we don't, but getting additional data as to what that might be?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you can break down the levels of the 548.
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
This would be along the same line of what trustee Watts said. When you've got the rankings from, from most valued to least valued, least valued looks to me like location. So, if you've got the information on the locations that seem to be most problematic, please share with the district on that one.
Okay, I can do that.
Trustee Moser?
I had a question for Dr. Malakow. Do we do an annual also survey of our employees?
Yes, we just did one, which I just commented on about, we had about, I think, the number was about 1,100 employees that participated in that survey. Those are done through Cognia, you know, a lot of the questions are field-tested by the US Department of Education. And that's what, I'm glad you asked that, because I would like to, you know, we're obviously looking to improve and work together, and, you know, in order to improve, you need specific feedback. So, we'd be welcome if you had some, you wanted to work with Ms. Farage and Dr. Patterson to give some input into surveying, because they're well-versed in validity and reliability. And I would say, like, just like, you know, for a teacher when you're evaluating, or anybody, you want specific feedback, because you need to know where it is in order to improve. Like, I'll use the example of the custodians. Okay, well, where is that, so we can specifically address it? So, in order for us to improve our performance, which we're always looking to do, we need some specifics, and we'd be willing to partner with you, if you're willing to, again, with the experts, Dr. Patterson and Ms. Farage, who work with the National, to develop these surveys that can, or get feedback specificity that would give us, you know, those results that we can use to improve.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing I would just say is that some of the results with central office and/or the board is not necessarily surprising from a statistical aspect, because, for example, you know, I may go in, we have 2,900 employees, and I might interact with an employee in the district, because there's so many, you know, three times, for example. You know, and I would never then use that and make a value judgment over all our data based on those limited interactions. What we do have is a macro and a micro. So, macro is central office, micro would be in the buildings. We directly supervise the principals that then provide support, and that's statistically, you know, proven through Cognia. So, some of that does make sense. Having said that, we're looking to partner and improve. And because we have done this in the past, and we've got this feedback, that then drives our school improvement plans and our strategic plan, we'd be willing to partner with you to do that and work with them and develop, you know, tools that can help us get that feedback, because we're always looking to improve for the staff, you know, collaboratively, that's where we meet regularly. And I'm very excited about this potential, you know, teacher advisory committee. I think it's a great idea and a great model. So, again, we're willing to work together, but some of the results, the other thing I do have to say, though, I wanted to ask, like, some of them might be specific opinions. So, for example, the one about top-heavy administration, if there's some comparable data that someone has, I'd be interested, because I have a report from Mr. Wall that I can share that shows exactly the opposite, that we are below average across the state, and we can have Ms. Harris sign it to you if you're interested, and it was in-depth. But, having said that, we still want to partner and improve, but those are the kind of areas, you know, someone, perception is that we have a lot at central office, but when you look at the data and the comparables to other districts, is that accurate or not? And so, we have it. Now, if they have data to the contrary, I'd be willing to sit down and look at that data.
So, I do want to address, we do actually have very specific feedback. Like I said, we omit it, like, it tells you, 500 survey responses, only 261 did not respond with a comment. We have actual numbers, but we intentionally left out identifying information, because we said this would be an anonymous survey. So, no, I have very specific data. I have names, I have buildings, I have, I have very specific data.
Great. Dr. Malakow, the survey that administration does, is that anonymous survey or no?
Is Ms., yes, I believe it's totally anonymous. Is Ms. Farage here, or inter Dr. Patterson to comment?
Are we able to trace back where it came from, which URL, or? Because that makes a difference, how people respond.
The district survey is anonymous.
It is anonymous, okay.
So, we do not, we can't identify who took the surveys.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Watts?
So, I was gonna ask as well, is the Cognia survey anonymous? And I think the other thing is, being in the classroom, there are certain benchmarks that you try, Christmas break, Memorial Day weekend. So, I think also knowing when the survey is given out, and it would be interesting to see the data, say, three weeks going into the school year, and then, like, I hate to say it, three times a year, but to see if we can agree, again, because I think having a clear survey to say, "Where is the growth, or where's the need for improvement?", without being fearful of retaliation and any of those other things. And I think part of what you had said before is that if they email the school board, they don't hear back. So, for those who are saying that we've emailed the school board, just so everybody knows, if I get an email, the, I pass it along and I CC everybody, and it's the president or the chair of the school board that replies back. So, I usually try to tell everybody, "I'm CCing you, the president will go ahead and respond to you," and I also include the superintendent. So, if you're not getting a reply back, please let us know, because we follow a process. So, on that end, we try to make sure that we give as much information to the chair, who then speaks with Dr. Malakow, and they try to get an answer back.
But you will not hear from each and every one of us.
Yes.
Our, our process is to have one voice for the full board. So, do not ever expect that you're gonna hear each individual board member respond back. That's not how we're structured or organized.
Trustee Thorpe?
And following up on that, even if you email us separately, we're always gonna be running things up the chain. The one thing that I would also ask Ms. Martin is, I think we had spoken about this last fall. When people leave the district, it's usually for personal reasons. Are you working with HR to get more feedback as to what are the real reasons that people are leaving, so that we can address?
We actually have our own exit survey. For a while, it wasn't getting sent out, but we're sending it back out, and we do have some data that we need to compile right now. So, I, yes, it's recently picked back up again.
Okay.
And so, yeah, I will be having things to share.
Okay. Trustee Petrikov?
I have one other, I'm a little confused when you equated the boundary line exemptions and teachers will leave the district or put their children in private schools. Well, isn't it that even more of a inconvenience to a teacher to move a child to a private school, because they, the boundary line exemption has changed, and they have to take the school within the district that they're teaching? I'm kind of confused as to why you would say, "Well, it would be easier for them than to just move their child to a private school and will lose students that way." It kind of is counterintuitive of what they're asking for in the first place.
Not all of our buildings provide childcare, and when a teacher works on one side of town, but lives on the other side of town, and their home school does not have childcare, and they have to be at their home, at their work building at one time, private schools do offer extended hours, basically. So, it's a childcare issue.
Within the same, within a commuting distance for where their job is?
You would drop them off early before you go to work.
Yes.
I just, I was trying to figure out how that, how that was, was more convenient.
It's childcare.
President Martin, in my line of business, we're as good as our last deal. I can make somebody millions of dollars, and as soon as they lose a buck, then I'm in trouble. But on a more serious note, this is great information, this is a great conversation starter. I am happy to see Dr. Malakow receptive to moving forward, discussing all this. So, I'm sure we'll get some feedback on a monthly basis or sooner. So, this was very good. I welcome it, I'm sure we all welcome it, and I'm sure Dr. Malakow will, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. So, can you, so then, in the, the teacher, sorry, maybe Dr. Michael, the teacher advisory committee slash union collaboration, so is that having, what, can somebody tell me what that is, or what does that look like?
So, it really, Kathy approached me and asked for this, kind of to emulate the student advisory committee. So, for years, though, we had the input coming from union presidents, really has been the process. They meet, I meet with all the union presidents individually, monthly with HR, and then we'll meet as a whole group with the groups. So, this is to bring people, and what we, there's certain, like, I have Dr. Swiden, because we then, on the committee, we're gonna try it. We want to have a diverse, representing elementary, middle school across the district. So, there may be an application process, there may be things, but ultimately, too, is this group is problem-solving. So, we come together, and we solve problems together, and that's what we're willing to try. It was Kathy's idea, and, you know, I think it's a good one. And as you're aware, the student one, we've presented all over, you know, the country on that model. So, let's just see what we can do, you know, with it, and see how that goes. I did, you know, ask her, and she agreed with a couple provisions, Dr. Swiden to be involved, because she knows how to run the process. And then, they requested that the executive directors would be, that's fine on our end. We're happy to do that. So, that's kind of, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna, it'll be the first year, kind of piloting it, and we'll see how it goes, we'll collect data and see, you know, the feedback. You know, I guess we're kind of emulating the student model, but obviously, it'll be a lot different, because it's the employees.
Okay.
It's still in its infancy. We're trying to determine exactly, like, what the questionnaire's gonna be like, and then how we're going to pick teachers to be on this committee, or whatever it is, and then we need to figure out how it's going to run. This is something the executive board is talking about at our last meeting, and we're gonna continue doing so.
Do we know of any other school districts that are doing this? Are we the first?
No, I, I'm not aware, but she might be.
I have not researched it. I just knew that it was necessary for Dearborn.
Okay, okay, so this might be a unique standalone, potentially.
Yep.
Okay.
Be the first time Dearborn is ahead of the game.
Well, it's not the first time. Dearborn's always ahead of the game, at least. Just a follow-up, would either party oppose one of the board members sitting in as a liaison to the board? Just think about it, you don't have to ask for no. Trustee McDonald?
That was one of the things I was gonna ask, but also, you said diversity, but are we looking at most likely having a representative from each school? Because I've worked on committees, and once they get really large, they're kind of unmanageable. So, I was, what is your thoughts on how that's gonna look?
Actually, that was something we just talked about at our last executive board meeting, and that's, we're not, we're really not sure yet. Do we want someone from every school, and that would...
Just think about it, you don't have to answer no. Trustee McDonald?
Um, that was one of the things I was gonna ask, but also, um, uh, you said diversity, but are we looking at, um, most likely having a representative from each school? Because I've worked on committees, and once they get really large, they're kind of unmanageable. So I was, what is your thoughts on how that's gonna look?
Actually, that was something we just talked about at our last executive board meeting, and that's, we're not, we're really not sure yet. Um, do we want someone from every school, and how, that would be like, what, 30-something people? Like, we're really trying to figure it out, and how it's going to be most effective and beneficial to staff.
But you also want to hear the voices from all those buildings.
Exactly.
So, something to think about.
Yes.
I'm glad that's your thought.
What I meant by, the Dearborn's always a trendsetter, I remember a long time ago when we got hit with an eighteen-and-a-half million dollar budget, it overnight, I won't mention any, I won't get into politics, but, everybody is yelling at us, go see what they're doing in Livonia, while the superintendent from Livonia was calling Brian Wisting, God bless his soul, saying, what are you guys doing in Dearborn?